Good evening, everyone. We are going to start the speaking panel. Hello, we're on.
Here on.
On. I believe we're going to have Mr. John Holland back to give his invitation, please. Would you all rise?
Our gracious Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight grateful for all of the blessings that you've bestowed on Canyon Lake and the surrounding areas. We are grateful for our liberty, for our freedom. We're grateful for the right of self-governance. Tonight, we pray for all of our political leaders, both at the federal, the state, and the local level. Please bless this meeting and please grant wisdom to the Canyon Lake City Council as well as staff. We bring these all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Allison, would you like to lead us with the flags a little, please?
Ready? Begin.
Our flag is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bonner?
Here.
Mayor Proton Castillo?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Aaron Crans?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Do we have anything to report on a closed session?
Mayor, we do not have anything to report.
Okay. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the City Council's agenda?
Take a motion.
No second.
All second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Nobody opposed? Chamber of Commerce announcements?
Thank you, Mayor, City Councilmember, for allowing me to speak. I would like to begin with saying thank you to the city and to everyone who attended Oktoberfest on Saturday. It was great to bring the flavor of Germany to the town center. Chamber wishes to thank John Zeitz, Mia Riley, Sport Stop Crew, our volunteers, their hard work in making this a great event. We also want to thank The Friday Flyer for the publicity promotion in the weeks prior, and thank you Donna Ritchie for the amazing photographs taken throughout the evening. We also want to thank the American Bavarian Brass Band and Lake Elster Storm mascot, Thunder. Now, if I could take a moment to read off our generous event sponsors. The Sport Stop, ABC Events, Berkshire Hathaway, California Motorsports, Canyon Mattress &amp; More, CR&amp;R, Lake Elster Casino and CJ Sports Grill, Lakefront Family Dentistry, McKee Plumbing, MRA Financial and Accounting Corporation, Peppi's, Platinum Plumbing, Southern California Anderson, and Southwest Riverside Association of Realtors. Our next event's going to be the 27th Annual on October 26th, Parade of Frights. And this begins at 9:00 a.m. in front of City Hall. We have 50 town center businesses using the Chamber Treasure Map. We also have some members that are not located in the town center that will be set up in front of City Hall to hand out candy for the kids also will be on the Treasure Map. There will be a costume contest. DJ Mike Shoyer, Good Times Entertainment will be playing the tunes. ABC Events Saint will be there with the bounce house and the carnival games. There will be a special appearance by Thunder and Lake Elster Storms. We're seeking sponsors for Parade of Frights. Contact Allison at the Chamber. Allison will be contacting area businesses to sign up for the Treasure Map in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. I believe we have a proclamation that's to be given tonight. Is that correct? Well, the council, we have a proclamation that we would like to give to you. If you'd be so kind, maybe we could step up here.
Okay.
I know you've done this before, but the fire was quite a bit of reason, so if you bear with me. This proclamation. Thank you. I guess it's on. This is to, this is remembering the late Sparrow Marie Marlene Green. These are not the proclamations that we're used to doing, but certainly it was all necessary. Whereas Sparrow Marlene Marie Green was born on May 14th, 1947, and grew up in Weir, California, and whereas she completed a nursing program through Cypress College, Fullerton Junior College, and served as an ER nurse in St. Jude Medical Center in Fullerton, where she taught first aid, CPR, and disaster preparedness. And whereas the County of Riverside Emergency Management Department presented Sparrow with the community service award for her 10 years leadership in the Riverside County Medical Reserve Corps, and her community worked to increase emergency preparedness efforts. And whereas her work over the years included female terrorism response training, working with Doctors Without Borders, and a collaborative disaster response training with the terror county. And whereas she assisted in teaching and training to the city certain as the community emergency response training program. And whereas she was a resident of the city of Canyon Lake since 1987, and contributed to the city of Canyon Lake by serving on the Canyon Lake Emergency Preparedness Committee along with her husband, former Canyon Lake Mayor Larry Green. And whereas she is survived by four grandchildren, five grandchildren, and her loving husband Larry. Larry and Sparrow were married for 30 years and would have celebrated their 31st anniversary on October the 8th. Now therefore, it is resolved that the City Council of the city of Canyon Lake does hereby extend this proclamation to loved ones of Sparrow Green. She was a kind and caring human being, and we are extremely honored to have a donor for the most of this community will never be forgotten. This is signed by your fourth councilman. As you know, we have discontinued the monthly meetings of the Public Safety Committee, and Thank you for the service. hopefully to facilitate things a little better. Thank you. Thank you. Want to say that? Tonight, we're going to have individual reports from the Sheriff, Fire, AMR, Animal Friends
I hope the mic is on, but this is hard for me.
of the Valley, excuse me, and Special Code Enforcement. So, who was your first, Adam?
But I have to tell you that her spirit still lives.
We have Lieutenant Sims.
Oh, good.
He's hiding in the back.
And she believed in God and the Lord liked her many times and helped her through her
Yes, yeah. All right. Good evening, council. This is the report for August.
dedicated profession, which was helping others.
So during the month of August, we had 428 calls. That's down 87 from July, which had 515.
It's not goodbye. It's 'til next time I see ya.
Also, there were seven Part 1 crimes reported in Canyon Lake.
So, thank you.
So we had one aggravated assault. We did have four burglaries, which was up from zero, so we had a net change of plus four. Larceny theft was down from eight to two, which is a change of six, and then we had no motor vehicle thefts in the month of August. We made, let's see here, we wrote four traffic citations, made two DUI arrests, took one collision report. In total, there were five arrests in Canyon Lake, three of which were for domestic violence and the two for the DUI driving under the influence. I took a look at some of the burglaries. It looks like we had, one was from a garage and then also to an unlocked vehicle. Let's see here. Also, I had some tools stolen. There was another attempted burglary to another residence where the garage was left unlocked. Also, some tools. The garage door opener was taken. And as far as the petty thefts, one of them was a theft of a ring doorbell, and the other one was some tools taken from a vehicle. Can I answer any questions?
Time of day these burglaries occurred?
They're usually in the evenings. I didn't take the time of day, but we usually get them anywhere between 10:00, 10:00 p.m. and 4:00 a.m. is usually where they call.
Okay.
I have just some questions. So the calls for service, the 428, those are calls or contacts, right? Not necessarily phone calls to RSO, is that right?
Yes, and they could also be ones that are generated by the deputies as well. So if they contact somebody, or they do an area check, or a business check, they'll pull a number and it will report as a call. Because the calls come off of how many file numbers we pull per day. So a lot of it is, yeah, it's not all calls from the public. We do generate a good portion of those ourselves.
Okay. And looking at the stats in August, it looks like the reports, the aggravated assault, burglary, and larceny, those did not end up becoming arrests, is that right, based on what's in it?
The aggravated assault did, though. That was the domestic violence.
Okay. And I think we saw a charge on that in the Finance Committee or something.
Some test.
Yeah.
Okay.
I did have one other question.
Okay.
In light of this. Do you have any data, and I know you don't have it with you, but in terms of averages by the year, I know what we're looking at over this three-month time period from June to July to August, but in terms of what this looked like in 2018, do you know if this is pretty much average, or are we above or below what we've seen in the past two years?
As far as crimes or what? You know, I don't know. I'd have to look at it, but I can get that. We do have it.
Great.
I can compare the two.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody here from the Fire Department?
I don't see anybody here from Fire. However, the stats were provided to the City Council, and we do have copies on the back counter for the public. If anybody would like copies, they are available.
I do have some questions regarding the statistics. I had hoped, I don't think Fire came last month either, or maybe they had to leave. I don't remember. But I do have questions. If we have questions about the statistics and no one's here, do we forward those to the City Manager, to be sent to the Fire Chief, or do I list all my questions right now?
Whatever you prefer.
I have a lot. Mostly, my questions relate to response times. A lot of these response times for Battalion 13, Engine 60 out of Canyon Lake, regarding 11 to 12-minute response times over on that side of the city Strawberry Lane, Monhorn, et cetera. And then some of my other questions relate to, find the page. On the 10-minute-over response synopsis for August, I see responses from the Rosetta Canyon Engine as well as Engine 73. I don't know that we've seen data before on Engine 73, so I do have some questions about that in terms of responses for breathing problems taking 12 minutes, et cetera. So if you want, I can email those questions to you. Anyone else have questions, I can also include them in my email.
Well, we had this discussion, there was, I think it was last time, two months ago, Casey, where you and I had the same issues with that 14-minute call and that 12-minute call. And, you know, my memory serves me that what they were going to start doing, any minutes, any calls that were 10 minutes or greater, they were going to start giving a statistical analysis on why that took place.
Right.
So that was a request that we made a couple of months ago, just because, what's the reasoning? And they even agreed to it. Yeah, there's, we got to do some research and figure out what it is. So maybe we can ask them that if we get any calls outside of 10 minutes, can you just assume that the council's going to be asking why? And can we get the data for that? I think that would be my only suggestion.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay. We'll move on to AMR.
I don't believe we have anybody present from AMR or Animal Friends of the Valleys.
Okay. Well, I know who we do have here. Special Code Enforcement, Gina?
The activity report is provided in the back, if anybody would like to pick one up on their way out. Just the normal. The only thing I wanted to touch on is, we will have a booth at the Parade of Frights to be out there in the community. City Hall will be open, and we'll be participating. Everything is going smoothly. Nothing has changed. The BLM is still crazy, busy with vehicles and traffic, but we are doing a good job issuing citations out there. So, any questions?
I did have a question. You mentioned the BLM, and as you know, we always discuss this in the previous Public Safety Committee, but I wanted to make sure that I understand.
Microphone.
That I understand the statistics. Are we, when we're talking about camping, are we, are these people who are just hanging out and stargazing, or are these people who are attempting to stay?
Yeah. We're talking full tents, camping equipment, fire pits, dog leashes, fishing poles, everything that you would take to a normal campsite.
Okay. And that's, are those same people, the individuals who get cited for the prohibited fires? Or is that an entirely different citation and individual?
It's different. Yeah.
Okay. And then the illegal dumping. I know that you've worked in conjunction with the Lake Elster Code Enforcement when we see the mattresses and all that lovely stuff out on.
Greenwald.
Greenwald. So is this, those citations were finding people, or is these, are these instances as opposed to citations?
We can only issue a citation if we see it and we catch the people. If I can dig through the campsite stuff left behind and have an address or something to make contact or send a citation, certified mail return receipt. Without any follow-up information, it doesn't result in a citation.
Okay. That was all my questions.
Last time we spoke, we talked a little bit about the new sign that was getting put up by the BLM.
Yes.
Is that completed?
Yes.
How's it look?
It's great. They shot it up six times.
Already?
And it's still good. It's got, it's bulletproof, so although it shows where the bullets hit, it doesn't go through or penetrate the sign.
Do you predict, you know, we're approaching the winter season. Do you predict there's going to be a lot more campfires, more people coming out? Or do you predict the cold weather's going to keep people away? What's, you know, what are we doing to, you know, kind of look at ways to be prepared for that?
You know, it's a pretty consistently wonderful area for people to visit, and in the wintertime.
We're not advertising that.
Well, yeah, no. Because it's wonderful to them to visit, but we pick them off.
Yeah.
So it is prohibited. It's not allowed. The signs are up. But it, it doesn't, it doesn't drop off because it's winter and it's raining. Probably we have less two-wheel-drive, front-wheel-drive cars.
Right.
But it doesn't prevent.
It's pretty consistent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Gina, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, this is a region problem, homelessness. Ideal place to set up camps. And how are we doing with the management? Have we had an influx at all of any homeless folks that have tried to establish a foothold up there?
My answer to that is, they can't establish a foothold because we're there daily.
Okay. So is the camping people, were they homeless?
Well, homeless people aren't outwardly volunteering that they're homeless. So I would suspect some of them are living out of the vehicle, and it's convenient for them to have mattresses and giant tents in the back. But homelessness, they do like certain amenities. They like to be close to places that they can panhandle, 647C. And they like to be near where they can pick up food, commodities, items. Yeah. Services that they find beneficial to their lifestyle.
Just based on the recent decision by the Ninth Circuit Court, the cities in the south of Orange County, you cannot preclude them from your parks and some other issues that have made a huge management issue on how you maintain the infrastructure and all the things that go with it. So I'm glad to hear that we're not a desirable location, but the Santa River was not a desirable location either.
Correct. Yes. So I think by continuing our efforts out there and knowing that they'll be checked on, a lot of people living the homeless lifestyle, as I refer to it, they don't like to be around or with people. They want to be secluded. So if I could ever recommend, everybody just trim up the dead trees, make it so that they don't have a place to hide, that's the best thing that we can do to make other areas of Riverside County more desirable to live in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving. Yes?
And then pass the agenda had emergency preparedness committee update and POA, is that eliminated from the agenda?
Mr. City Manager, has that been eliminated?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Emergency Preparedness Committee update and POA.
Correct. The POA was not requested to be at this meeting. This is not a city entity. And the Emergency Preparedness Committee has not met for several months, so we're waiting until there's something to update us with full tab on July 8th.
And the other thing, and the positions that you're asking to come to the City Council are paid over, paid over time.
One more time, okay? Because it's beyond the normal working hours. So we're going to have trouble getting them, to give them to the meeting, council meeting.
I'd be happy to address that, Councilman. The, there wouldn't be any extra cost to the city for Sheriff or Fire report since there, it's all included in our overall contract. City staff are asked to flex their time to be at council meetings, so we should not incur any additional costs from the city staff being here for council meetings.
You're talking about Fire?
No, no, I'm talking about Special Enforcement.
Oh. Well, how about AMR and Animal Friends of the Valley?
Well, we don't pay anything for AMR. AMR is provided through their contract with the county, so we have no cost there. And again, our, our cost for having a sheriff's deputy here to report and firefighter here to report, those are included in our contracts with the county for the services.
But they can be in the contract, but if they don't show up, they're not going to come to the council meetings.
If they don't show up.
If they don't, you know, if the Fire and the AMR and the Animal Friends of the Valley don't come monthly, then he can be in the contract, but we're not going to have a representative presenting the information.
Correct. All we can do is extend the invitation and ask them to be here.
And there's been times they haven't attended the meetings that we've had previously in the morning as well. So we certainly hope they show up. And as far as the emergency preparedness, once that is back up and running, I'm sure that there'll be somebody here to speak on that as well. Any other comments? Now we're going to go to public comments.
Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the City Council. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you're commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time the particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you're addressing the City Council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the City Council may only do the following. Refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response. We'll start with Darcy Burke.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and residents and guests. There's two issues I want to discuss tonight, and the first has to do with water quality. Well, actually, they both do, but the first is about taste and odor issues. I want to thank the residents that have reached out to me either on social media, or called me, or emailed me, and shared their concerns. First, I apologize for the inconvenience, and although I'm going to tell you it's safe to use and drink, I know that when your water smells bad or tastes bad, nobody wants to. So one of the things that the Water District does is, as preventative maintenance, is we take our other sources, groundwater imported water offline, and we use exclusively Canyon Lake water, just as we would in case there was an interruption of service at the 15. So if our main line went down, we need to make sure that we're able to sustain and serve our residents and customers through that service line. The timing was what we thought would be good. However, the lake quality has changed. So last weekend was probably the worst of it, and I was told this morning that residents should start seeing a significant improvement. This may happen again before the end of the month, when they take the water plant offline, and then they will not be taking water from the lake directly. But I just wanted to let people aware that it's happening now. I understand their concerns, and I'm happy to answer any questions that they have, and I appreciate people that tag me, so, because I can't follow every single group on Facebook, so I really, I really do appreciate it. Last month, I brought to you some issues that had been in the media about PFOS, or per- and polyfluor-alkyl substances. These are man-made substances, and the media is taking a huge, I'll say shining a very bright light on this particular issue. So I thought it'd be helpful to give you a little bit of history, and then we have a brief video we're going to show you about our response to kind of give you a background. The United States EPA does something called Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. It's called a UCMR because if it doesn't have an acronym, it doesn't exist in water. And this is the thing where they'll, they'll bring out emergent contaminants, and they'll say, "Test this, see what it is," and whatever. So in 2013 was the first time the US EPA asked water districts around the country to test for this particular substance. And at that time, the technology only allowed you to test for 40 parts per trillion, or 40 drops in a rose bowl full of water. The recent actions by the California State Legislature has made the response or notification level significantly lower, to 4.5 and 6 respectively. So six years ago, we couldn't even detect it, and now because we can detect it, they've come out with. This may happen again before the end of the month when they take the water plant offline, and then they will not be taking water from the lake directly. But I just wanted to let people aware that it's happening now. I understand their concerns, and I'm happy to answer any questions that they have. And I appreciate people that tag me. So, because I can't follow every single group on Facebook. So, I really, I really do appreciate it. Last month, I brought to you some issues that had been in the media about PFOS or per- and polyfluor-alkyl substances. These are man-made substances. And the media is taking a huge, I'll say shining a very bright light on this particular issue. So, I thought it'd be helpful to give you a little bit of history. And then we have a brief video we're going to show you about our response to kind of give you a background. The United States EPA does something called Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. It's called a UCMR because if it doesn't have an acronym, it doesn't exist in water. And this is the thing where they'll bring out emergent contaminants, and they'll say, test this, see what it is, and whatever. So, in 2013 was the first time the US EPA asked water districts around the country to test for this particular substance. And at that time, the technology only allowed you to test for 40 parts per trillion or 40 drops in a rose bowl full of water. The recent actions by the California State Legislature has made the response or notification level significantly lower to 4.5 and 6 respectively. So, six years ago, we couldn't even detect it. And now, because we can detect it, they've come out with a notification and a response. So, each of you got a letter, a response, letting you know where we are. The state hasn't determined what level they're going to settle at. The EPA is still doing the study. What I want to express to people, just because we detect it, doesn't mean you need to treat for it. This particular chemical and family of chemicals is in your popcorn, your Teflon, any Gore-Tex or anything that was water-resistant, fire retardant. It was absolutely in everything, not just where we're finding it now in our drinking water. So, I just want people to be, although it's alarming, to be cautious. Also, like most things in the state of California, whatever level they come up is a negotiated amount, has really nothing to do with the science backed by it. So, although we're concerned and we're working on ways that we'll possibly have to take sources offline until we can treat them, which, just so you know, is significantly more expensive than what we're doing now and using now, which then goes back to impact rates. We're taking it very seriously. And we obviously care first and foremost about the public health and safety of our residents and visitors. So, if we can show the video, that's all I have. And as always, if anybody has any questions later, I have some fact sheets I'll leave in the back. So, if you want to keep them at City Hall as well, people have questions, feel free. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Darcy? Before the video?
Lights, maybe?
Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District is committed to providing our customers reliable, high-quality drinking water to their homes 24/7. We thoroughly test and treat our water thousands of times per year to ensure that it meets some of the highest water quality standards in the world. Recent news headlines across the country are warning about the dangers of chlorocal and polyfluorocal chemicals, also known as PFOS, in drinking water. In addition, state and federal regulations are increasing and changing quickly to ensure that PFOS levels in our water are managed in a transparent and responsible manner. But what exactly are PFOS, and are they in water? PFOS are man-made contaminants that are found in thousands of products that we use every single day. They're found in our shampoo, clothing, cleaning products, food wrappers, non-stick cookware, firefighting foam, paints, dental floss, and many other products we are exposed to daily. Water districts don't put these chemicals into water. But over time, they've entered our waterways through manufacturing, landfill, and wastewater effluent. With water quality being our top priority, we are taking steps to address detected levels of PFOS in our groundwater, including regular sampling of our wells to ensure that they are in line with state and federal standards. Currently, all of the water that EVMWD provides our customers meets state guidelines for PFOS. If PFOS are discovered at a reportable level, EVMWD will take immediate and appropriate actions to ensure water meets state and federal regulations. We will also make sure to legally notify our customers along with the appropriate local, state, and federal officials. Treating water with PFOS is not a simple fix due to the substance's water-repelling characteristics. EVMWD is exploring treatment options to determine which method performs best and is cost-effective. Our customers are our top priority. We are proactively working to ensure that our drinking water meets or exceeds current water quality standards. We are also taking immediate steps to tackle PFOS in our drinking water through new innovative strategies and proven treatment options. For more information on PFOS and EVMWD, visit evmwd.com.
Any questions for Darcy? Awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Travis Montgomery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Before the clock starts, I'd like to suggest that perhaps reports like from EVMWD be included in the previous list that you had so that when you read your statement about three minutes, they have adequate time to share with you. They are a government agency like police, fire, and others. So, that might be a more appropriate place for you. Just a thought, something for you to think about. I'm going to talk to you about something on the consent, or that's on your consent calendar, but I was advised by the city clerk that consent calendar items are not items that can be discussed. So, I should speak to you then during the public comment time. Before I even start though, Larry, I want to welcome you back to the council. Glad to see you here. And I think it's important we have you here because your position pacing is going to be critical as we possibly consider forming our own fire department in the next year. You'll have great input to that. My reason to wanting to address the council tonight has to do with the emergency medical subscription program that's further down on your agenda. I want to encourage you, when you get there, to delay that program, not just delay the second reading of it, but to delay the entire program until you've done a fee study, as was suggested at the last meeting as one of the things, and a vendor program for administration and cost completed. And finish those studies before you get into the ordinance. I've had some time since we were here last week at the special meeting. We received the ordinance, you know, 20 minutes before you talked about it and before you voted on it. I've had a little bit of time to study it, but there's only been three city business days since then to really do that. What I have found is that there's a myriad of programs going on in cities all in our area, Corona, Montclair, Loma Linda, Corona, and no one program is the same. They are all different. They all have different components. And I can find all kinds of components in there and those that are not included in what you presented as your ordinance here. A few of these things that I saw in there that are spelled out, each of those cities differs from the other. In some cities, residents and non-residents can be included in the program. In the city of Loma Linda, a non-resident can subscribe to the program for services administered if they're in that city. So, if you have a daughter and grandchildren that come visit you often, they may want to subscribe to that program so that they're covered and don't fall into the non-resident category if services are needed. So, they can buy it. There are, each of them has different fee costs and subscription rates. I've saw none of them that were, as we're saying, voluntary, but ours also says everyone will be enrolled unless they opt out. All of the programs that I've reviewed in those cities, you sign up for the program. It's a volunteer program. I have a home in Big Bear also, and it's on the radio and in the newspapers up there all the time. Sign up now and become part of the program. Our program does not, our ordinance that was presented does not address renters, for instance, in our city. And if a landlord, because it talks about the person who gets the bill for refuse collection and all. If a landlord says, no, I'm not going to pay that. I don't, I'll unsubscribe from it. I'll opt out. What about their renter? Where do they fall into the category? A lot of these cities also go into great depth to talk about how the first thing they do is bill the patient's insurance company. Just like if you went to the emergency room, even though that's not covered by your insurance carrier. I have Kaiser. I'm supposed to go to Kaiser first. But if they take me to Inland Valley, Inland Valley will bill my insurance company. Cities bill the patient's insurance company first.
Travis, I'm sure there'll be more discussion, but I hate to cut you off, but you have almost five minutes.
Well, I'd like to ask, I've got just a couple more things. I'd like to ask permission to finish it or ask someone to yield me some time. I will not take more than another minute.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. But they do build the, like, what I'm really trying to point out is that there are just lots and lots of programs there and things that I read in our ordinance that aren't covered, aren't addressed, and should be. I don't want us to pass an ordinance as recommended in order to find out or start a study of what the costs are going to be. It kind of reminds me of the discussions back about Obamacare when Nancy Pelosi said, we've got to pass this to find out what's in it. Let's not get caught with that same thing and pass the ordinance, then come back with a fee study that says it's not plausible when we already have an ordinance on the books. Thank you for the additional time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Ms. Miller.
Canyon Lake, you're being boxed in. MSJC Menifee has a 5,000-seat football stadium planned. Who knew about it? Anybody? Okay. So, that will be a lot of traffic on Antelope and Newport and the On and Off Ramp. And if you would like to organize or connect with me, it's stopbuildinganything@gmail.com. And on the west side, how many of you know about the Nichols Ranch project by the city of Lake Elsinore? That will be 130-room hotel, 168 homes, and the adjoining traffic. The congestion will be enormous on the I-15 and violate the traffic circulation in the SECLA laws. So, the amount of construction not emissions will be significant, unavoidable, and unmitigated. This violates the mitigation measure MM by Elsinore. However, they go ahead with whatever they're going to do, including a 16-bay gas station refueling. And I think we have enough gas stations in the area to create a fire problem should one occur. So, we already know that the air quality, because of Pacific Clay for years, has been leading to asthma in children and emphysema in the adults. So, we don't need more building, more particular matter, and violating the California Air Resources Board Carb Air Quality Rules in their handbook. So, I only get three minutes. And I hope you want to sign this petition and you contact me, or you can contact me right now. And also, opposition to 5G EMS. Now, I don't know all about this hardly, but they don't either. And we don't want to be their guinea pigs. That's the problem. So, fifth-generation telecommunications infrastructure will be put on most corners. And it will be the five generation. And everyone who wants one of those phones, besides that, they start to play with yours at Apple if you don't buy a new phone and pay for it by the money. And we don't need that. They even say it's affecting the bees, confusing them, and they're not able to pollinate. They go to their hives and they pass away. So, this kind of admission, we need to fight. And America, you can do this. Fight back. Sign petitions. Your city can be one of the first to say, we're not going to allow those to be put in our neighborhoods. You can't tell us what to do here. We already have 4G. That's enough of a problem. Wireless antennas on every corner. The reason is because they are smaller, so they have to put in more, because they have 100 cells in them. And you can see their round formations, sort of like satellite dishes. And they have these arrays. And is that a bell? Is that a bell? Is that a bell? All right. So...
Yes, thank you for your presentation.
I have this petition here.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jack Wong.
Well, I guess the first question I wanted to ask is, the ordinance on the BLM property used to be that no overnight camping. Are we still enforcing that? We are. And we are successful at doing that. Good. That's a major thing with rivers. I know Elsinore is having a big problem right now. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is item five in the consent calendar. I agree with Travis. I think that I'd like to see you pull that and study it. It takes a lot of effort to come up with the right answers. And I don't think you have them right now. The problem has come up many times. We've had at least three or four so-called experts, plus the fact that we had a very, very good committee, which I know Larry Green and I were on the same committee. Travis was on the same committee. And we researched this thing for almost a year, going to other cities, finding out what it costs. And I'm just going to give you one item that you probably don't even know about. Just to hook up to the 911 call, the emergency, which is a requirement by law, over $100,000. And you've got to put up the towers. That's just a sample of some of the costs that I know that you probably haven't even thought about. But I'd like to see you pull this thing and do a little more. So, use the talent that they have here in the city. Many of us have gone over this many, many times. The people that they hired didn't have as much time as Larry and I have on the fire department. So, anyway, I would request that you pull that and study it a little bit more. Go in detail so that you, and the help is out here. We'll help you if you need us. And that's all I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two more cards with her for item 11, so we'll hear those at that time.
That's the end of the public comment, then? Thank you. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody like to read that?
Yes. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items.
Thank you. This is where it says that the mayor is asking, any council member would like to pull a consent item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to take that opportunity to think, if you don't mind.
Oh, please.
I guess they'd like to pull item number five, please. Anybody else have any that they'd like to pull?
That's perfect.
Okay. And I think we need a rule call on that with the exception of item number five.
I'll second the mayor's motion to accept the consent calendar with pulling item number five.
Thank you. May we have a vote?
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Protime Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Krenz?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item five.
Thank you. I guess we now... Was that a standing ovation? We're going to have a little discussion on this item five. And I can tell you that, first of all, this will probably be said a half a dozen times tonight, but we welcome Larry Green back to the council. And it's very important that we have him back here. And that was probably one of the main reasons why I or we have decided to pull this item for now because we need his input. And I know that it'll be well-received. And there are a lot of other reasons why this item has been pulled for the time being. So, I'm not going to expand on it anymore, but perhaps some of the other members of the council would like to address this, including our city manager? Anybody?
Absolutely. All right. So, let's dive into it a little bit. So, here we are at the second reading of ordinance number 187. And I think there's a lot of things that can be added to this ordinance. And, you know, especially having Larry here now, I think you're very familiar with this particular ordinance. And you've seen it done in cities, not only in Riverside County, but in Orange County as well. I would love to use this time to have some discussion on the ordinance to let our city attorney to talk a little bit about some of the things, get you up to date, dive into it, have a discussion amongst us, and see if we can either add, take away, or just take a dive into it.
Sure. Why don't I give a shorter version of the presentation I gave last time just so we can make sure that Councilmember Green... can make sure that Councilmember Green knows how our program has been drafted. The public commenters are correct. This type of program is utilized all throughout California. Each community does need to make certain judgment calls about how to implement it in their particular community so that it works for them. And some of those were touched upon, and I think that maybe, just going through very briefly, we can bring up some other ones that maybe will inspire discussion among the city council. So, like I said, we are establishing a program here. We're not establishing any particular fee or any fee at all. 30 days from now, if the council adopted this, or 30 days from a future date if it's adopted, the city would be unable to charge the fee because it simply doesn't exist. City is going to have to go through that process. We're setting up the framework for the voluntary EMS subscription fee right now. There's a lot more work to do before the city is able to actually begin collecting revenue to supplement the general fund subsidy providing fire service. So, that's mostly what the urgency is about here, is that we are running a structural deficit, as we explained in our letter to the county of Riverside. We can't continue doing that forever. So, we're trying to get going. In order to do an effective study of what the costs are going to be, it would be very helpful to know what the program is structured like. So, for example, one of the things that was brought up by the public commenters was our program, as it is put here, is an opt-out program. It's completely voluntary. Any person who does not want to participate in this program is not required to. There's no fee, there's no charge. All they have to do is say, "I don't want to participate." That is used by some cities in the state of California. It increases your participation rate, which would have an effect on the fee structure and how it's managed. So, that's just one example, but I thought maybe we could go through and talk about some of the highlights, as it were. So, the program is open to every person who owns or is in control of residential property. So, that would include property owners and landlords, as well as homeowners, permanent residents, which would include tenants, and any business with a physical location within the city. If the city council wanted to open that up to anybody to purchase a subscription, like you said, I mean, I think that people who maybe just occasionally travel through the city may not be all that interested. But, you know, for example, if there were people who are regular visitors, as it stands right now, they are not qualified to join the subscription program. But if the council wanted to change that, it certainly could give direction to do so. It also covers certain people. So, that's the person who's paying for the subscription and everyone who's a permanent resident of their household. And the goal here is to make this simple on the families and residents of Canyon Lake. You know, we don't want every person to come in, but during the rate study process that the city manager's office is going to go through, knowing who is covered by the subscription is going to affect the rate. So, we can't do a rate study if it's... For example, if you were doing subscriptions on an individual basis, that rate would be very different than if you were doing it on a household basis. And that's going to change the calculations that they have to go through. Additional other items that I thought were, you know, perhaps worth discussing, I'm always going to talk about section 3.44030B. The first sentence, this participation is voluntary. Any person can decline at any time, no fear, no charges. C, which is eligible participants who are not businesses and who do not receive the bill, that was something that got brought up by a public commenter, they're eligible to participate. They just have to be one of the other covered persons that we were talking about before. Additionally, I did get a question before the meeting. What about new residents who join? So, new residents are allowed to enroll within 30 days of joining. The way it's written now, there's no proration. So, if you joined the city in March and you want to sign up for the EMS subscription fee, under the way it's written, you have to pay for the full year. If the council wanted to direct us to change that to proration, so they only have to pay a portion for the remainder of the year, you certainly could do that. And then, one of the questions that I heard was also about reentry. So, this is an opt-out program. People are making the conscious choice, "I do not want to participate in this. I'm going to take the risk that I will need emergency medical services and I will get a bill." However, some cities do have a, call it a freebie. It does sort of give a incentive sometimes to not participate, but it's usually very restrictive. You get one forever. It isn't, you know, you get one and then you can disenroll, and you can get another one. So, those are some things that the council could give direction on tonight. I would need to remind you that if you did give us direction to make any specific changes to the ordinance, that it would require another second reading in a month. That sounds like something that some people might be happy about. And then, the last sort of note here that I got from listening was about billing insurance first. So, our collections section does allow the city to collect in any manner allowed by law, and that's certainly something that we can look forward to in the implementation stage. Before we bill someone who receives EMS services, we can look at billing their insurance first, because some insurance do actually cover it, or even a portion of it. I hope I touched the highlights pretty well.
Question on billing. Especially when you're doing third-party insurance, I hope that our ordinance would allow, because that's additional work on staff, whoever that person is doing, whether it's in-house or out, and there has to be an administrative fee that is associated with that, because there's always a chance that the insurance will deny it, because every one of us has got a different insurance, and if you read your policy, some covers, some doesn't. And so, I mean, the paperwork is going to be the same whether they pay or not, and so there's got to be some cost recovery based on time it takes to file that particular paperwork. So, I think that we need to make sure that our ordinance covers those things from an administrative standpoint that gives us our administrative overhead costs that are built in here if we get into the circumstance of billing out other than this direct fee, which if you're a subscriber, it's pretty much straight up. If you're a non-subscriber, then the onus is on usually the subscriber to bill their insurance and then pay us. It's not that we bill their insurance for them. So, I think that's got to be a distinct difference. It's up to the client or customer to seek out payment that is different than us doing it. If not, we're going to have to add another fee in here to be able to recover staff time, because that is a lot of time.
Maybe I can address that, Councilmember Green. So, first, I would say again, we're establishing a framework here. There is going to need to be additional work done, including the rate studies, these studies, and administrative procedures that is used by the city manager. But to address a couple of specific points you brought up, under 3.44050G, which is on page 65 of the Agenda Backup, the debt owing to the city includes all amounts, including interest, accruals, administrative fees, including attorney's fees, penalties, or costs of collection. So, that was something that we attempted to address, and I think we addressed it pretty comprehensively here. And then, going on a little bit further, there's also explicit authority for the city manager to contract for the services of a collection agency to recover the amounts due as debt owing to the city. And so, that is something that is addressed, and the goal, again, here is to set that framework that lets us know, okay, this is how the program is generally going to operate so that when they do the fee study, they can come up with accurate numbers, we don't have to do it twice.
This kind of reminds me, like, our Animal Friends of the Valley ordinance relating to microchipping in Spade Uter, where we set the framework and then they came back with the pricing. Is that correct?
I think that's absolutely correct, and it's actually consistent with every fee the city has in its municipal code. The municipal code does not set the amount of fees. Those are set on a regular basis by the city council after it does a fee study. In fact, the city just went through a comprehensive fee study recently. So, the ordinance's purpose is not to set the amount. That's a council decision, it's a separate action, and a separate calculation. This does not lock you into charging any particular amount, or frankly, any amount at all. If the council later decides, you know, this is not something we're interested in doing, you have no out-of-pocket costs yet, because the legal service is covered under the retainer. Whereas, if you were to, for example, have a fee study done and then decide you wanted changes to the ordinance that changed how the system operated, it may require you to have that fee study done a second time.
The other question that I have, too, this program, as several mentioned out there, you know, every city has their own model. And, correct me if I'm wrong, at least through my research, this will be the first prescription program, not only of a gated, but a community as large as we are, that's a private POA, that has a POA in it. What, through your research, if any, have you noted that there's an issue with this in regards to the fact that our entire community is in a property owners association? And is there any concerns or issues with that?
I try to look at this city's unique relationship with the POA as an opportunity rather than a challenge. That being said, Canyon Lake is absolutely a unique community. I did not find anything in my research of any similarly situated cities and how they perhaps adapted to that or used it to their advantage. We've been adopting a structure that is fundamentally similar to other communities in Riverside County and Orange County, which is you have two fees, a subscription and a response fee, and then you have collection through the same method as your utility. Our utility happens to be trash.
Trash, yeah. Okay. And so, you know, pertaining to the POA, they have several parcels, obviously. They have several different properties. They would just be seen as any other customer in Canyon Lake.
If they're receiving residential trash collection services on those properties, they would fall under the opt-out provisions, but of course, they could opt out. You know, if it's a vacant property, it's not...
It's voluntary.
Yeah. They can send a single letter. Here, we're opting out of all these.
All these, and, yeah, here's a parcel below.
And in fact, I'm not familiar with their specific cases, but if there are vacant, they may have a search for trash collection anyway.
Also, you know, let's do a play-by-play, just so we can play a little role play. If I'm in a park in Canyon Lake, and I'm at, you know, I'm at some park, Sierra, and I'm hanging out, and I'm a guest of someone who is not prescribed, I break my ankle, I call 911, and the fire department shows up. What happens?
So, I assume you are a permanent resident of Canyon Lake, but we're assuming it's the theoretical guest of our city.
Sure hopes so. I don't think it would be conceded if I wasn't a permanent resident.
I was going to say, we might have to go through the vacancy processing.
Yes.
But, no. So, if you're an invitee to our community, you're not a permanent resident, you don't own property here, you don't operate a business that is located here, you are not eligible, as it's written now, to participate in the subscription program. Of course, the council could direct us to change that tonight.
Right.
And in that case, if you were to make that change and allow any person who wanted to subscribe to subscribe, and you were to also have that one-off freebie, in the case of that individual who's unfortunate to hurt their ankle in our city, they would be given the option of enrolling in the EMS subscription program in lieu of receiving a bill, which, you know, since we're spreading it out over the entire community, would be substantially lower.
Any other questions, Jerry?
The only question I have is that with that scenario we just talked about, I can see where that individual would actually opt in because of the cost, understanding what it would cost if we have ALS and BLS side of this. And I'm not sure that's a good avenue. I think that there's some concerns with that. Not saying that that person is not getting the opportunity, but since they're outside the community, we'd say if it was a resident in the community, somebody hooked to the community, they should get that option, but I think outside, probably not.
I would simply say to that, my goal here is to explain to you what I believe would happen. I think it's the body's decision as what is good or bad as an outcome. You may be right.
I would agree with that.
Would you maybe tell the audience the acronym of ALS and BLS, what that stands for?
Sure. BLS is Basic Life Support. That would be someone that would do simple bandaging, blood pressure, anything that's on a very lower scale. ALS is paramedic level or higher, which would be an intervention with oxygen therapy, putting a scope on, looking at your heart rhythm, starting an IV, administering any drugs, putting certain types of splints that are more advanced. So, once you get out of the basic bruises, cuts, and that kind of stuff, you pretty much step into the ALS side. And so, usually, that's a higher skill set. Not usually, it is. And so, that's how they differentiate between the two, and usually, there's a list of on the BLS side what that falls into, and then on the ALS side. So, there's no cloudiness in that column. And so, the subscriber would know that, or the person gets the call, because that's how it would be built.
Thank you. Any other comments? Could you, Mr. City Manager or City Attorney, summarize what we've just said? We're going to tweak this ordinance just a little bit to bring it back next one. Is that correct?
If the city council was to give me direction to change any of the things we've talked about, we would be able to bring it back for a second reading and adoption in a month.
It would still qualify as a second reading?
It would. We can't change the ordinance at a second reading. So, if we changed the ordinance today, we would have to have another second reading at a regularly scheduled meeting, your next one, which is, you know... Sorry, that's a long answer to a relatively straightforward question.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Through the discussion tonight, Mr. City Attorney, have you seen any changes that want to be made to the ordinance?
I didn't hear a lot of support for the ideas I threw out there. I wanted to maybe, maybe I could ask and sort of get a sense and then...
Yeah, that's what I was hoping for.
Is there consensus in the council to expand the people who can join the program to basically anybody?
Well...
Right now, it's property owners, people who are permanent residents, and people who are businesses located within the city.
And that's what the program is designed for. It's our residents and our business clients. So, it's not designed for everyone that comes through or travels through our community. That's why we have a separate way of doing a cost recovery. That's my take on it.
And that would include renters?
It does currently include renters.
Correct. Yes, and I think renters, because they're in, and as long as they've got, in a normal fashion, they're within the community, they should be eligible, as most programs are all programs that are familiar with. Renters are eligible because they live within the city. Now, if they move out, they don't get a refund.
Right. So, that is something that is contained within the ordinance. Perhaps something that we could change is new residents to our community. We want to encourage them to join the subscription program. Currently, it's not prorated. Doesn't matter when they move in during the fiscal year, they have to get a full fee. Would the council like to direct me to change that to the amount shall be prorated for a new member of the community who wants to join?
I think that's an incentive for those who show up after the filing time. I think it's a good faith on our side, and hopefully, the next time that they re-up, they'll be at full rate, but it gives them a way of coming on board.
And just for point of clarification, every year, they re-opt in?
That's it, yes.
So, that's, just so you know?
So, it's just that first year.
So, it's just that first year, and I think you're right. I think that's a good faith measure. You can't help someone who buys a home and closes in December, and now they've got to pay that full year. I know it's based upon the taxes, but I think that's good faith, if we can make that change.
Okay. And then, another change that, you know, we're very lucky to have the experience of Councilmember Green, you know, I'm hearing that it may be wise to make it very explicit within the ordinance that the EMS response fee, now it's currently written in the singular...
Right.
Our municipal code allows anything written in the singular to be interpreted in the plural, but perhaps I can go through and make that plural so that we can have different fees for ALS and BLS. And just, because we're trying to be as clear as possible, I, easier than doing backflips and explaining to people why fee means fees.
And I think that's a prudent way of managing our cost recovery when you're on that site, which gives them the avenue, if it's an ALS or BLS, to go after the insurance company to be able to get a cost recovery, because some do. Block don't. But that is a whole new market now in the healthcare industry, because a lot of people are getting hurt, and the insurance extends out for those services that are provided. And it also offsets those baseline services that...
And it also offsets those baseline services that without those cost recovery ways, they couldn't provide those levels of treatment. And so, that's the only way that these programs get funded or offset. It's not 100%, it's not a push, but it does soften the blow of what it costs to do those, those programs.
Agreed. And then, one recommendation I'd have from legal, since I'm going through and making some changes anyway, I think, you know, ordinarily, our ordinances here are very straightforward. We don't try to over-lawyer them too much. However, since I'm at it, I was planning on adding a couple of standard ordinance sections to it as well. An environmental determination, this would have no effect on the environment under CQ, a separability clause, just in case in the future, one of these sections gets taken out. And then, a publishing section directing the city clerk to publish in the manner required under state law, because we are trying to be as open and transparent as possible going forward.
Absolute, 100%.
So, I'd like to, so I have, okay. So, what it sounds like to me is I have direction to make five changes to this and bring it back at second reading. The first one would be to make sure that the emergency medical services response fee is changed to plural, so that we can differentiate based on the level of service, because there are different costs to the city going forward. Then we also prorate the EMS description for new residents. And then I add those three sort of boilerplate additional sections to it, just to tighten it up a bit. Were there any other changes that you heard discussed tonight? Or are there any other sections in the ordinance you had questions about that? Because it's easier to make the changes all at once than it is sort of piecemeal it.
Steven, is the BLM employees covered by?
Oh, is that BLM employees?
POA.
Oh, the POA employees. The POA could certainly join the subscription. They are, I think we could probably shoehorn them in, shoehorn them in under business with a fixed location, if they're not otherwise residents.
Right.
However, if, since I'm making changes, if you want to specifically include the POA as an eligible party, we can do that.
Bracket it.
They are unique.
Bracket it. Yeah. Business, 1 to 10, 10 to 50, over 50.
The, the intent of the business participation is that there will be a fee that is based on the number of employees. So, the more employees you get, the bigger the fee goes.
Yeah. Just like water.
And the same thing will be, by the way, for the residential. There will be an equivalent dwelling unit, so we're gonna consider single-family households at one level. But if you get a multifamily development, obviously, there's a lot more people there to cover, so their fee will be slightly bigger.
And could perhaps you explain to the audience as to why it's necessary to pass this ordinance without the fee study being done at this particular time? Either put the cart before the horse or the horse before the cart, I'm not sure which it is, but.
Sure. Well, I, I think that from a legal perspective, it is certainly possible to do either. However, from a practical perspective, we are making a lot of movement on providing fire services and EMS services for this community. We have a lot of work to do just to get this implemented, not to mention all the other directions that we've gotten on it. I would really hate for us to do the fee study, then come back with an ordinance and we want changes now, and then we have to redo the fee study and we're not able to get it, the revenue in, in the next fiscal year. That, that, it's mostly a timing issue, from my perspective. If you get this on the books at the November meeting, it goes into effect at the beginning of December, that should give enough time to do the level of fee say required to be constitutional requirements, so that we're in the position to actually start collecting this fee in the next fiscal year. If we delay it much beyond that, that, I can't, I, I can't predict whether we'll be able to be in that position, because we do have to get paperwork in by certain dates.
Well, as I recall, when I was on the phone last week, I think I suggested to you then, that we delay until November, so I'm glad that you, you agree and that the rest of the council agrees, and I hope that the, the audience will be satisfied with the, with the progress we're making. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, two things. First of all, did we address the re-entry issue, if the council wishes to allow a re-entry?
I, I did not bring up the re-entry issue, because I, I got some furrowed brows. But we were talking about it earlier. It didn't seem like it was a good idea. Nobody bought that.
Very good. And then, secondly, Mr. Mayor, even though the public had a chance to comment on this during public comment, since the item was pulled off of the consent calendar, we have since had a couple of speaker cards submitted, so at your discretion, you could take public comment again on, on this issue at this time, if, if you so desire.
I'll be happy to, I see them lined up at the podium. Mr. Zikes?
Thank you for following the Brown Act with that. It says we can do this, I'm being kind to do this, that's what the Brown Act says. And over, over litigating and turning it, we don't do that. Maybe you should look at your old cell phone criteria that the attorneys put together. I have three questions for you on, on this, that when we look at some of the other cities in Murrieta who no longer has this, they have their own fire departments. We talk about this as being a cost recovery. And one of the things that's unique isn't the fact that we have a POA, it's we have a city that has three fire departments that cover our city. I think that is what's really unique about this. You looked at earlier, the number of calls. You also have two, you have a fire department and you have an ambulance. ALS, BLS, paramedics, EMT, whatever you want to call it, they're on both. So, if I call for one and the ambulance gets there, do I have to pay for the fire department? Can I say, "Fire department, back off? I don't want to pay for you. The ambulance is here. I need to be transported." Fire department can't do that. Who's to make that determination? Who's gonna tell you and your representative that there was a call at this address for this person? Who's gonna tell you? Elsinore? Menifee? It's your fire department that can do that, which is 40% of the community, not 100%. So, if you're gonna have cost recovery, your cost recovery is for Station 60, not for Railroad Canyon Road, Lake Elsinore, Station 5 in, in Menifee. I live in the primary zone for Station 5 in the East Bay area. So, when 5 comes, why should I have to opt into that program to pay for somebody, but pay you for a service that's given to me by Menifee? If you're gonna answer those questions and then, and say that this is not an illegal tax, we're not taxing, Mr. Mayor, you're in, you're in the Railroad Canyon Road. So is all of the businesses that are in Canyon Lake, but you're gonna charge for the businesses. You don't have primary responsibility for that. Lake Elsinore does. So, I'd answer all of those questions at some point, instead of saying, "Let's go do this and we're gonna go, we're gonna charge all of this stuff, we're gonna charge everybody," and you have to figure out how you're even gonna get the information to get that, to get those fees back. Thank you.
Go with Travis Montgomery next.
Thank you for the opportunity to address, you know that you're talking about making some changes. I, I disagree, well, I disagree with the City Attorney that you can do something tonight and have a second reading. This hasn't been published as an ordinance. Once you make a change to it, I believe that this is a new ordinance. It's not the one that was presented to you. And you need to take public comment and all that. We haven't seen it in writing, you're gonna make some changes. So, it seemed to me that at the next meeting, you would have to submit to us ordinance 188 or whatever the numerations are, that we could look at and study, and then you could bring it back, and you could comment on it and pass it, and then have a second reading. But I don't, I don't feel like, and the City Attorney can correct me on that, that you can amend something now and make a whole lot of changes to it, and we haven't had a chance to study it, see it, do it, to have a first reading of it tonight and a second reading next month. Second thing is that most of these programs, if not all of them, are address-driven. When the EMS providers come, they ask you what your address is. And it's, and it's driven from that. If the patient gives them an address in Menifee, if, if we had this program in Canyon Lake, they'd say, "You're not eligible for the program, you're gonna be billed." Well, we don't have any ordinance today. It's silent on what you do for non-residents. It does say you will bill a resident if they have an occasion in the community, but it doesn't say what you'll do with a non-resident. It does specifically say under businesses that your customers are not covered. But it also says, if you're a resident, you will be either applied or you have to have the coverage. If I'm in one of the restaurants and go into cardiac arrest and my address-driven comes up, that I'm a Canyon Lake person and I don't have this insurance, I'm gonna be billed. If I live in Menifee and I'm, the guy sitting next to me, rather, lives in Menifee and goes into cardiac arrest and gets serviced, and he's going to give, they're gonna have a Menifee address for him, he's not gonna be charged. I'm already paying real estate taxes, property taxes, to get services here. I've got a fire tax of, we got 800 and some thousand dollars a year coming in, but the guy from Menifee can come over here and, and do something. What are you gonna do with a major traffic accident on Railroad Canyon Road, where somebody from Lake Elsinore and somebody from Menifee, they get in a crash, they're gonna get serviced. But if I have an accident and I don't have insurance, I'm gonna be charged. Those are some of the things that I was talking about, that we need to, you know, get into this, come back and talk about it, so. The other thing, just I want to quickly touch on, and we talked about getting this done by the first of the year. This goes on the tax rules. Our next tax rule won't go into effect until November of 2020, and you will have to submit the things you want on that tax rule sometime in around July, I believe, or, or August, for it to go into the county to be on the next tax bill. So, there's no rush to do this by December, or April, or March, or February. You'll have plenty of time to get it going on the tax rules, because it's gonna be on the tax rules of 2021. So, just some more food for thought. But I hope you won't delay this and not find a way to rush it through tonight.
Thank you, Travis.
Next, we have Nancy Horton.
We're back to public comments again now?
Yes. Still comments on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to our comments. First of all, I'm neutral on this topic. My contentions are about other aspects of the way that it arrived. First reading was at a special meeting on 9/26/2019, last Thursday. A special meeting that kind of caught a lot of people by surprise, including me. The second reading was advertised on the consent agenda for a regular meeting, three business days later. Friday, City Council is, or City Hall is closed. Saturday and Sunday, no business days, so people would have had three business days if they had a heads up as to what we were talking about. Most residents have not heard at all of anything to do with this. There was no time for an article in the Friday Flyer, there was no time for even a lot of buzz on social media. I think it needs much more discussion. There are many details here that haven't been kind of fleshed out. And doing that fleshing out here during a discussion doesn't help us at all with the greater community that is going to need to understand this. We have a prominent citizen here tonight who showed in his comments that he doesn't understand what this is about at all. One City Councilman at our last special session was confused about the difference between EMS and AMR. One thing that really is a question in my mind is, having fought very, very hard for the UUT and getting it passed after a parcel tax failed, after another tax failed, do we jeopardize increasing our UUT by doing this? Is this going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back and so that our residents say if we want to go up to, let's say, 5.95 from 3.95 in our UUT or higher? Are we jeopardizing that by doing this tonight? I also was concerned about the fact that we have at least three stations that respond to us. And so, how do you compute that if it's Station 5 that arrives and comes to my house and they don't know anything about our voluntary EMS plan? Nothing happens. I don't know how it would be billed. Menifee doesn't have this. I also think, I wouldn't want to be the person who goes to the sports stop and has the heart attack on the seat if I live in Audi Murphy or in Canyon Hills. We know our restaurants really need people to come and eat there. If they find out something medically was wrong to them and they're going to have to pay the city of Canyon Lake, they might say, "The heck with it, I'll go to Bob's Pit Stop or someplace else for dinner." There's a lot of things here. POA issues, guest issues, child issues, issues of people who have chronically ill conditions that require multiple visits from EMS. What about the people right outside the gate that always get serviced by Station 60? The people in Meadowbrook and the unincorporated areas of Paris, they're gonna get a free ride and we're paying for it. So, many things about this. I think we need time. We need time for the public to digest this. And I would hope and pray that this council would never again put an ordinance on a special meeting agenda and expect to pass a second reading less than seven business days later. I think you should give everybody 30 days. Even the POA does that. So, please consider that. That's how you gain trust. That is how the perspective, the perception, sorry, of our residents are about this council. If they ever figure this one out, they're not gonna be happy with the council. When you do things, think about it ahead of time.
Thank you, Nancy.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for pulling it. And I hope that you vote to look into this. This is a real project. I mean, there are things, there are probably, I can't think of maybe 100 things that you haven't considered when I listened to what he's presenting. You presented a basic program, and it doesn't fit any of the cities that you're talking about. This is a different type of city. We have a POA, completely different from a regular city. And you really have to sit down and study the different things with reference to who's going to pay for what and who are you going to get? If I call 911, am I going to get the fire department or are you considering, I'm going to get AMR? AMR is not a responding physician that the, the fire department is. AMR comes in and they are in the direction, when they get there, of the fire department. AMR don't make the decisions, the fire department makes the decision, especially if you're talking about a person with a heart attack and so on. And I know they have a paramedic sometimes. Paramedics don't always respond with AMR. And I think Jeremy knows that. But we've, we've got to take the time and get the information out to our people and publicize it so they can study it, and they probably got better ideas than maybe we're trying to bring up. But at least give them a shot at it before we start making permanent decisions. And to me, this is almost going with a permanent decision, and I think that's unfair to our people.
I have no more comments.
Thank you. Did we have a motion in a second on the consent agenda?
Point of clarification, pulling this item in the discussion that has taken place tonight, I believe the notes that you have taken, Mr. City Attorney, is to reword the ordinance based upon the conversation that we have, to bring the ordinance back for a second reading at the November council meeting, to which then we will vote on it to whether to approve that ordinance or not. Am I correct?
That, that's correct, and you know, just for the sake of clarity, I thought it'd be good to go through the proposed amendments to the draft ordinance right now, just so that it's in one spot and it's easy for the city clerk to. and it's easy for the city clerk to write down.
Mr. City Attorney, real quick before, sorry to interrupt you. I just want, I just want to make it clear so we know what we're discussing. Right now, this body is talking about taking on the ordinance that we're making provisions to right now in November. So I just want everyone to make that clear, that if there's any changes that you want on this ordinance number 187, it'll come back to us at a different number with different language based upon the conversation that we're having now with our city attorney and city staff.
And that's the whole point of a first reading of an ordinance, is to have that discussion. Staff is not omniscient. We're prohibited by the Brown Act from getting all of your, you know, comments into an ordinance beforehand. So the very point of a first reading is to get those comments. And then you have a second reading with the final version, and then it's adopted. That's why you have two readings.
Right.
So with Mayor's permission, would you mind if I went through and just said specifically what those were?
Can I ask one question since I'm a new guy on the block now? And it's a comment that I picked up, and it's due to the scenario of a TC on Railroad Canyon that obviously could be non-residents. Does our ordinance provide us with the ability to bill non-residents for our services?
It does.
That's all I need to know.
Can you repeat that?
The emergency medical services response fee is required to be charged to any person receiving emergency medical services within the city. So it does not matter that they are an eligible participant in the subscription program or not because of their residency. The city will charge that fee. The restrictions are only on who's eligible to participate in the program, and that's limited to residents, property owners, and business owners of Canyon Lake.
The last thing, Mr. Mayor, if I may. If we make the changes to this ordinance and it comes back to us, and we move forward to pass that ordinance, and through our study, whether it's fee-driven or, you know, we come back and we find out that it's going to cost X per parcel, can we then go back and rework a new ordinance based upon the findings that we have?
Yes. You can amend the ordinance at any time so long as we go through the proper procedures for that, including enough to repeal the ordinance.
So we could repeal, okay.
Yes. There's nothing locking you in at this point.
If I may, I'd like to take a five-minute break. At 8:08. Thank you. I think we had a little more than a five-minute break, so we're going to resume at 8:20. And where did we leave off? Did I cut somebody off someplace?
Mayor, I think we were at the point where I was going to suggest the wording of a motion, just to make it as clear on the city clerk as possible, based off of the sense I'm getting from the council. Obviously, the council didn't decide to do its own motions or no motion at all if you wanted.
Okay, please proceed. Thank you.
So the motion would be to amend the draft ordinance 187 and bring it back for a second reading and adoption at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council with the following amendments. Amend the eligible participants of the ordinance to include the POA. Amend the EMS response fee, to be plural, so that it is clear that we could have an ALS, a BLS, or any other fee based on the will of service that's being provided. Amend the new subscription language to allow proration for new residents of the city of Canyon Lake, and to include the three boilerplate additional ordinance language that I discussed before, which is an environmental determination that this will have no effect on the environment, that there is a separability clause, and that the city clerk is to publish the ordinance as required by state law. That would be a motion.
Okay. That is the motion.
Well, that is, that is the language of the motion. I am not a member of the city council.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So I think the whole reason tonight for pulling this particular business item was to be as transparent as possible. I think that is the whole notion at which you're trying to do, Mr. Mayor, by pulling this. And so I want to talk through a couple scenarios. The first is, this is our second reading of an ordinance that we're making changes to. Is a first reading needed?
No. So you have a first reading, which is when amendments are allowed. You then have to have a second reading of the ordinance as it is to be adopted. We can't do that tonight because it sounds like there may be amendments to it. So the proper procedure would be to send it again for second reading and adoption at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. You don't need to do another first reading and a second reading in 30 days after that. Just another second reading.
So if that's the case, then to allow more time for the public, or even to allow the public to comment on this, my suggestion would be that we adopt the changes that we've discussed here tonight. We move forward with those changes, which would allow us to have a new ordinance, but we make it a business item instead of a consent calendar item. So there can be discussion on the topic, so therefore people from the community can also talk about it, and it's not part of our consent calendar. That would be my suggestion. So I'll clarify my motion. My motion is to move forward with the second reading of ordinance number 187 with the changes that we've made tonight, with discussion with the city manager and the city attorney, to allow this ordinance to be seen in the November meeting as a business item as opposed to a consent calendar item.
I second.
I second.
I think we all second that.
Is there discussion on the new motions?
I usually don't respond to members of the public, but if you'd like me to, Mayor, I could.
Please.
No additional public interest is required at this time. I was simply clarifying with the city clerk what, how to amend that motion.
So we had a motion, and we had a second. I believe this would require a roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Procham Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns.
Aye.
Motion carried to move forward with the amended version of ordinance number 187 and set the second reading for the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Okay. We're going to move on to business items. Michael, there he is.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Welcome back, Councilmember Green. Tonight, staff is bringing back an item we've had before in the past few months. If I can read you the recommendation. Recommendation is that recommended for city council to authorize the city staff to terminate the service agreement with Innen Valley Habitat for Humanity and reallocate previously allocated CBG funds towards the city's ADA accessibility project. If I can kind of summarize everything, hopefully quickly. A few months back, staff brought to city council an issue that was brought forward to us by County EDA, allocated CBG funds that had been inactive for over a few fiscal years. The amount was somewhere above, a little above over $25,000. Staff brought to council an idea of allocating that money towards an ADA project. It was city council's decision to, let's look at, maybe seeing if we can revisit or bring back the home repair program and try to re-promote the program to see if we can get a little bit more activity at the Fairway Estates Homes, being that it's more of the qualified area for CBG funds. Staff brought back what was determined. There was no activity at all whatsoever. Council then directed staff to take the allocations that are still there and maybe allocate 20% of it towards the ADA accessibility project and 80% towards potentially public service agencies such as Help or Helping Hands. At that time, we determined that probably the best scenario for us to do was to meet with County EDA in person to kind of determine what we can and cannot do with those funds. And I set up a meeting with County EDA. We had County EDA folks. We had a couple of council members there too as well. And the outcome was pretty much, the monies have been sitting there too long. They can't be used towards public service agencies. They were previously allocated as public facility money to run the program for the home repair program. So it had to be still allocated for public facilities. Their recommendation was to still see the city move forward with the ADA project, which is suitable for those type of funds. At the same time too, we also reached out to Helping Hands to meet with County EDA. They met with them the next day to kind of discuss what is it that they can and cannot do. Specifically, the funds were, was made aware to them that, you know, specifically for public facility money, that they can actually, can get a portion of that money. However, there were going to be the administrative situations to administer those funds and fall on the city for us to sort of handle for them. Well, it's been determined by staff, city manager, that administratively, we can, the city cannot, doesn't have the time, the manpower to do that for Helping Hands. That is something that Helping Hands has to do somewhat on their own. But however, they technically don't qualify right now at this moment. So County EDA did explain to them what they can and cannot do, or how they could potentially get a portion of that money. But again, administratively, it's something that would have to fall on them to do. Mr. Sasser did say that he's only a one-man show. There's nobody else but him, so he pretty much said that it's not something that he can, he has a time to sort of do. So he's hoping that maybe one day, at some point in time, he will have more staff with Helping Hands that could maybe potentially help him administrate the program for him. County EDA also did explain that they could allocate per district funds, for county funds, and kind of explain what they need to do. So it was made pretty clear that moving forward, the city, the county's recommendation is for us to kind of move forward with the ADA accessibility project for these particular funds. But again, it's based on council's decision of how we want to do that moving forward. So the recommendation is for staff to recommend to the city council that we move forward with these particular funds for the ADA accessibility project. Questions?
Staff, do you have anything to report on? Any public comments on this?
We need to know what the ADA project is.
It's in the book, it's in the report. There's about 40-some pages of improvements that need to be made.
The report has actually been part of the agenda for the last week, couple months.
Several months.
Several.
And I just want to just say this too. Mike, I want to personally say thank you for all the hard work that you've done on this. I know that, man, we've had, what, five or six meetings on this now? And I know you've sat down with Helping Hands multiple times, and you brought the two together, and we did all we could in that regards. And I think it was three months ago, maybe four now, Inner West put together a pretty in-depth, you know, synopsis of what's going on here in regards to ADA. So that could be, you know, viewed, and it's pretty substantial. I even think the mayor was, you know, concerned at some of the way that we're operating, and we need to address those. But I just personally want to say thank you for all the hard work, and you've allowed me to work through this and not only start to understand what CDBG is, but also doing everything we can for Helping Hands, and you just continue to put up with me. I'll just put it that way. But thank you. I appreciate it. I know this has been on your desk for a while, and we keep on going back and forth. So I appreciate it, man.
Of course.
I have a question, Mike.
Yes.
Have we been cited for any violations for ADA?
No. But ADA projects are kind of the norm when it comes to what you see in the report with public facilities. A lot of cities utilize CBG funds to update ADA projects within their own personal facilities. So this is not, this is a very common thing for CBG funds to be used as.
This is quite an extensive report. It's very well done, and it seems to me that it would be necessary for a lot of these items to be done.
You know, there's a lot of improvements that can be done here, so we should capitalize on the money that's available for us to do that, so.
And if we don't use these funds, we're going to lose them. Is that correct?
Exactly. We've been red flagged for these funds because if you look at the staff report, these funds go back from fiscal year 1670.
Right.
So they've been red flagged several times. Fortunately, County EDA has kind of helped us with that. But we're getting to the point where if we don't do anything, we're going to lose, we're going to lose the money, for sure.
Any other questions? Any other public comments to be made yet? I know, Nancy, you don't have a lot of time to read all of those repairs, but they are quite extensive. Okay, now, did I have a motion to approve this item?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve this. I believe this calls for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bonner.
Aye.
Mayor Procham Castillo.
Aye.
Councilmember Green.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mike.
I guess we now, we're going to move on to item number nine.
Number eight.
That's what I meant to say again.
And again, it's CDG again.
Repeat.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is sort of our annual allocation consideration at this time of the year. So this year, we're receiving potentially about 21,000 CBG funds. So staff is kind of recommending that city council approve and direct city staff to approve the 20, 20, I'm sorry, fiscal year 2021 in community development broad grant funds towards the city's ADA accessibility project and 15% of its allocation towards public service agencies. So what I was kind of hoping we can kind of still try to do, attempt to do, is still allocate 15% of the funds towards public service agencies in hopes that Helping Hands does eventually get qualified and can receive these funds. It's council's decision at the time when we do come back for city council to approve these, the projects that are brought forward. They choose to approve whatever public service agency that's qualified for these 15%. It's totally up for council to decide. We're kind of hoping that Helping Hands does kind of come through, and hopefully they do get qualified. So I do want to leave it open so that way there's an opportunity for them to capitalize on some of these funds still. So if council decides and receives forward with staff's recommendation, we'll do a deadline of nonprofit to submit their applications to the city, and it will be set on Monday, November 12th. Staff will also say public hearing at the December 4th, city council. November 12. Staff will also say a public hearing at the December 4th City Council meeting for consideration and approval. So tomorrow, we'll open it up for applications. We'll give the one-month timeframe for them to do that. And then December 4th meeting, we'll bring forward whatever qualified applications do come forward, keeping our fingers crossed for Helping Hands, so.
Okay. Any questions, staff? Any public comments? Entertain a motion in a second?
I move it.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. And I believe we have to have a roll call vote on this as well.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item eight.
Okay, now, we're going to go to item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. At the September 4th City Council meeting, the City Council adopted Urgency Ordinance Number 184 regarding filling City Council member vacancies. Before you tonight is the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 185. It's the exact same language as Ordinance Number 184. This is just a precautionary measure that we're taking. We're going to do a first reading, and then we're going to have a second reading at the next regular City Council meeting. So again, this is just a precautionary measure to ensure the city is covered should the city be faced with any problems in regards to the process of adopting the urgency ordinance.
Any questions? Anyone? Any public comments? Are there roll call votes necessary?
I move that we --
Motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Now, it skipped from eight to nine. In fact, it's nine to eight. So now, we need a roll call vote.
Yes, roll call for number nine. Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the introduction and first reading of Ordinance Number 185 in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Canyon Lake, adding section 2.01.140 to the Canyon Lake Municipal Code Regarding Filling City Council Member Vacancies.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to 10.
Yes.
This is a discussion of the minute format, and I guess you're going to tell us about that.
I am going to explain to you why it is much better for the city to go to action minutes. Currently, the City Clerk's office is doing summary minutes for all City Council meetings and for all committee meetings. This is very lengthy. It takes quite a bit of time. For every hour that we spend in a council meeting or at a committee meeting, it takes about an hour and a half, if not longer, for me to recreate the minutes. I have to listen to the audio. I have to go back. If people don't speak into the microphone, if I can't catch somebody's name, it's very, very time-consuming. So we are proposing that we go to action minutes. Basically, that all it is is we record the action. If there's any discussion that's very specific to the action or to the outcome of the action, then we would also record that as well. But we are proposing that we go to the action minutes. It's something that a lot of cities are moving towards. Cities feel that it helps reduce litigation. You know, the minutes are -- if I'm doing the minutes, I'm doing summary minutes. It's my interpretation of what I heard you guys say. It's not necessarily what you may have meant to say. So it's better that we just write down the action and go forward with action minutes. So we're asking the council give direction to staff to switch to action minutes versus summary minutes.
And this is because there's supplemental recordings, the audio and video as well?
Correct. So we did recently adopt our new record retention schedule. As part of that, we are changing the retention schedule for all audio to be a permanent retention. So we still have all of our videos available on YouTube. We have physical hard copies. We have discs of all of the audio. We have recordings that are saved in our shared files. Our shared files are being backed up into other servers. So we have a lot of backup for the audio files. They're still available for the public to request if they choose to do so. The videos are still available for inspection if the public requests to do so. It just minimizes staff time.
Perfect. Any other questions? We already have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. And a roll call vote again.
Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Crowns?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item 10.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to -- I need one --
On 10 seconds, I need to ask the city.
Oops, city clerk something, but I don't want to do it. It's not a secret. I just need to ask her something. Fill on, okay. I just had to verify with the city clerk that I did still know how to count, and I misplaced something. We're going to move on to item number 11, which is public hearing. And this is on the housing element. And I think we're going to have a presentation. And I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:43.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm going to, as I have in the past, on Housing Element Information, tagging with our consultant, Ralph Castaneda, Castaneda Associates. What I want to do with the PowerPoint is go through the whole thing, give you kind of an overview where we're at. You're never going to back up. Mr. Castaneda has had specific conversations with State Department of Housing and Community Development, and he can relay some of those details, some of because I'm not involved in those. But they are reflected in the document. So he can provide some additional details. So again, an overview to start with. So a couple of the things I have here are repeats of what we've done in the past. With regard to background information, the city is -- I use the term delinquent in updating its housing element. It should have been done before. It wasn't. We're in the process of doing it now. We were prodded by the State Department of Housing and Community Development late last year to do that. So we are in the process of meeting that request. General Plan Update is part of the overall general plan structure. So in the general plan, there's seven elements. Housing element is one of them. Land use element and circulation are more well-known. There's also the noise, safety, conservation, and open space elements within the general plan. Cities can also adopt additional optional elements. We do not have any of those. What have we been before you previously? The first one, as I noted on the slide, was a study session, kind of give you some of the background and just provide it to you, go over some of the items that we would be in the process of updating, not only with the element, but also as part of resolution of ordinance actions that would affect the zoning ordinance and general criteria. We then brought before you a draft version of the housing element, which from this point on, hopefully, I'll refer to as the initial housing element, and I'll get into that in just a moment. And on that agenda, we also had ordinance modifications. So they dealt with things such as emergency shelters, mandatory housing provisions within the code that are supposed to be there under state law. We then had a follow-up meeting. We included the reasonable accommodation resolution. That's a provision which allows the city to determine that possibly some building requirements may be able to be adjusted based upon need of that particular individual, so the building official would be involved. So where are we? So we're attempting to achieve housing element compliance. In our particular case, it's a two-step process. Most of the time, housing element is drafted, provided to state Housing and Community Development. There's some back and forth with regard to meeting certain criteria. At a certain point, they certify the action, and we do the adoption. In this case, since we are behind the curve, it's kind of a two-step. So we have the document before you, which is intended to meet the fifth cycle. But because we are late, we need to do what's called a midterm update soon. Midterm update is intended to, I think quite frankly, to kind of punish the jurisdictions that have missed the deadline, but also reflect the actions you should have undertaken if you had adopted it when you should have. So when we come back to you in spring with the midterm, we're going to, prior to that, have undertaken certain actions which demonstrate a movement towards implementation of the programs in the housing element as if we had adopted it on time. So recent actions. As I mentioned, we had a workshop before the City Council. Ralph is going to go over the state HCD review process. We prepared an environmental evaluation distributed for review, which includes not only advertisement in the paper, but also distribution to the State Clery House, where it's distributed to other agencies for their comment. We've not received any comments on the document, public or agency-wise. And then we're here this evening. After this evening, if there's a council action to adopt the general plan update or amendment, then we will package any additional public comments that are received at this hearing, if any, and transmit the document to the state. So then, the next process, we're going to start immediately afterwards. And again, I'm going to have Ralph go over these particular items. The items on the slide are comments made by state HCD to us that they want addressed. So we will follow that lead and undertake those items. So the recommendation to you this evening, unfortunately, is reversed. So in the staff report, I have the environmental action first. The environmental action is always first. In this case, I've unfortunately listed it second. So the staff report, please go by that. So the recommendation to you this evening is to adopt the negative declaration as provided under the California Urban Equality Act, or SEQA, that the proposed project will not result in significant impact on the environment, that you adopt the appropriate resolution number for this general plan amendment related to the fifth cycle, and then you direct staff to file a notice of determination. Before I leave this, I want to note that the housing element doesn't involve any specific construction activities. There's no land use changes that occur as part of this. There are not rezoning property from, say, open space to single-family or from single-family to multiple-family. None of that is occurring. So the negative declaration is just that, a finding that there's no effect upon the environment, no mitigation measures are necessary because no overt actions that would cause a physical change to the environment are proposed. So, and again, we received no particular feedback from the public related to that proposal. So with that, I'm going to back up a few slides, as I mentioned, and have Ralph give you some additional detail. Yeah, let's start here.
Greetings, Mayor. President of council. As you may recall, on June 5th, we had a public hearing on the preliminary draft housing element.
Here's a bio.
At that time, the City Council reviewed the document and approved its transmittal to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. A way of background, state law authorizes that department to review and comment on all draft housing elements. So sometimes it can be quite detailed in terms of comments, and all of them have to be addressed. So they received the preliminary, the draft housing on June 27th. And in early August, we had a two-hour discussion with two staff members of HCD. At that time, they identified the issues, the questions, the concerns, the topics that they felt needed to be addressed and clarified. We then committed to them a detail of every comment that they made, as well as the general direction that we would be taking to address those comments. In other words, we were waiting. We wanted to get their approval of our approach to respond to their comments before starting the work. So that was accomplished sometime in mid, around early to mid-August. After that, we had a series of email communications wherein we addressed five or six topics, transferred the material to them. They reviewed it and said, okay, 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 or whether they say this one needs a little more clarification and adjustment. The comments that they had ranged quite a bit. Some related to data. They wanted additional data on certain population demographic characteristics of the city. They wanted additional data on rents of multifamily housing and single-family housing. Their thought was that this data was required as a part of the element. They also asked in terms of the low-income population, as well as the special needs population with the state of the developing disabled. They wanted information upon services that are available to those populations and the general accessibility distance and so forth. So, for example, services available from the regional center, which deals with developing disabled, community access center, which deals with the disabled. They also pointed out that certain zoning needed to be addressed because state law had changed. And so those amendments are added as program efforts in the document that you have before you. They also indicated that in certain cases, for example, the city has a land use designation, mixed use, but not its own. So we've added a mixed use zone as part of the work effort in terms of the activities that would be done. In terms of reasonable accommodation, which Jim touched on, they wanted some additional effort made to promote and explain that procedure to the public, putting it on the website in terms of what it is, and perhaps having a brochure or planning a building department to convey a general awareness. So they've asked for certain elaborations. We've then prepared all the material. They approved all the revisions. So the document you have before you basically is the baseline document that you reviewed on June 5th, together with the responses to each of their comments. And so they cannot find that element in compliance because the city still needs to do the midterm. So in terms of midterm, state law was changed in 2012, basically to indicate that housing ordinance had to be adopted by the due date of mid-October 2013, or 120 days after that, which would be early February 2014. Any city which failed to do that was then required not only to adopt the initial housing element, which is the one you have before you, but also what they termed as a midterm. So, for example, the city of Riverside did not So for example, the city of Riverside did not meet their deadline, and they had to do a midterm, which they adopted in 2017. City of Disney Hot Springs is in the same status as Canyon Lake, and so they also had to do the initial element as well as the midterm. The only guidance that we've received so far in terms of the midterm, which we are hoping to bring back to the council on April, in April 2020, is that it's basically the document you have before you, together with additional public outreach and participation, specifically with organizations that represent low-income households and special needs populations. And then a statement and an explanation of all the progress the city has made on implementing the programs that were included here, not all of them, but all the ones that we indicated would be done by late March of 2020. So that's the guidance we've received so far in terms of how to package the midterm. And following tonight's meeting, we will then work with HCD to get more clarification on these because we do not want to start the work, bring something back to council, and then have HCD question it. So we want to make sure that when they say public outreach and participation, that we're doing exactly what they want, so that we don't have to wheel the mittwheels in April 2020. So that summarizes my comments this evening.
Thank you. Just a moment, Jack. Do you have any testimony here by proponents? Do we have any testimony by opponents? Jack, somebody's raised their hand behind you.
Well, one question that I had, first of all, why are we even involved in this? We're completely built out, with the exception of a few vacant lots. We don't, we're not in the low-income housing. The only low-income housing we have is our Oklahoma area, and they're all occupied and they're all filled. I can't see any reason why we are even involved and considered in this deal.
It's because the city...
Thank you, Jack. I think that Councilman Green might be able to give you an answer. He spent some time with our governor a few months ago.
Yes, sir. We don't have an option. HCD is very specific on cities, no matter how you, what size, how you're configured, you must have an element. That element must be in compliance. They must look at it. I brought up the uniqueness of our city, as other people did in that room with the governor. He said, "I hear you, but we have a process that you have to go through." He says, "I'm not asking it to change everything, but you have to have a plan on how to address these elements." And whether we're built out or not, we have to make accommodations on paper to show that we have the ability to be in compliance. That's, if, that's in the...
Well, the only thing that I could question that, first of all, we're not like other cities in a lot of respects, from standpoints that aren't inside, it's private property.
We still...
We're not...
We're still an incorporated city. We're still in the state of California.
But it doesn't affect our private property.
It's within the city limits. I tried to argue it, Jack, but it didn't hold any water. And because we opted in the past not to have a compliant plan, got us where we're in now, where we're having to follow up because, for some reason, in the past, we didn't keep up with the timelines. So that's why we are here today.
Jack, we're on your side, but we really don't have any choice in this matter whatsoever. Whether anything's going to happen in the future, we don't know that, but we have to try to become in compliance. And this has been going on for some time now. So they're not just picking on us.
Ma'am, if I could recognize...
Of course.
And I certainly understand the desire to respond to the concerns of the constituents. I would recommend, especially since we're in a public hearing, to receive the testimony. And then if you want to have comments at the end of that, that's absolutely appropriate. I'm just trying to make sure that we have a good record of the proceedings.
Thank you for keeping me straight. Well, was that a response by a proponent to the last one, Mr. Wansley?
I'm ready.
Everybody? That's okay. I don't think there's any more comments.
Ma'am, I do have, I do have two cards, people wishing to speak up inside of it. It doesn't specifically say proponents or opponents, but I think we can go ahead and hear the comments at this time. So we'll start with Mr. Anthony Kim.
You're happy to listen.
Good evening, everyone. You'll forgive me in advance, I'm having a bit of an illness. My name is Anthony Kim. I'm with Inland County's Legal Services. You may recognize my name from some of the letters that my organization has sent you in the past. While we do appreciate that you are moving forward with the adoption of the Housing Element, we do feel that there are still some outstanding issues not yet resolved, all of which have been outlined in the letters that you have received, to which we've gotten no response, I have to say, feel a little hurt by that. The draft Housing Element that is before you has not been subject to public review, which is required by Housing Element law. The community is required to engage with all economic sectors of their particular jurisdiction, again, according to both housing law and to the, according to the letter that HCD sent. I noted in the introductory section to the draft Housing Element that our letters were received, were taken into consideration by your, by your consultants, which we do appreciate. I also noted that the second letter that we sent, it states in here that we basically reiterated the same themes from the first letter. And there's a reason for that. It's because what was written in that first letter was either not addressed or insufficiently addressed. So the main issue that we have regards the site for multifamily housing, which, if you've taken a look at the Housing Element, is outside of the gate, is not accessible, or is accessible by only one road, and is not currently set up for either water or sewer. And we believe that that single site simply is not either adequate nor realistic for, to meet your multifamily obligations, according to HCD. So what my organization is looking for, and what we've been looking for basically through this entire process, is more feedback from the community, that the city speak with other community stakeholders to change some of the elements, or to change some of the parts of the Housing Element that we feel do not comply with California state law. And what I'm asking for tonight is for this particular item to be continued for the next hearing, so that the city can take the opportunity to do that and to bring the element more into compliance with California state law. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Miller.
Good evening. I am also asking for a continuum, so people can read the specific projects that are already underway in Canyon Lake, the 9.8 acres that will be turned into multi-unit housing at 24 units per acre and two acres. And I feel that we don't need funding removed from SB 2, planning grant programs for multifamily unit apartments. We need funding for repairing, electrifying existing structures and solarizing, and recycle tire pigments on existing roads. We just don't need to spread out and make new things. If you build a road, it goes housing on both sides as part of this Housing Element. The reason the Housing Element used to exist was so cities could collect a million dollars incentive for building affordable housing. Then it evolved to this compliance. And what did they say will happen to you if you don't comply? Many California cities are not complying, and Canyon Lake should be one of them, until they tell us what they plan to do to you. So this is for developers to create more projects for them. You need to, they need to go back east and restore abandoned cities and innovate warmth and cooling of existing structures. You've already said the square mileage of Canyon Lake just doesn't justify this. And you are built out, except what about that 1,100 house project hillside? I hope that you are deciding to moratorium against that. And what style of housing is that? Above medium pricing? And there is enough apartments in Temecula, Marietta, Elsinore, and this region, to call it the multifamily housing capital of California, they don't need anymore. Where is your regional director? For me, I just see the fallen forest, the mountains turn to aggregate, the minerals leaving hazardous waste in the lakes and rivers, and the downsizing of animal habitat, the raging storms and emitting fuming trails of GHG gases covering over valuable open space and converging in Elsinore, where the weather has turned to microburst on several occasions. We don't want another one of those roaring through here. So no more housing. Just try to repair what you have and bring it up to standards that use less electricity. The council has added high-density planning at Town Center Canyon Lake Village Overlay, this 9.18 acres. And it violates the CEQA GHG rules on more noise, more vibration, further need of water in habit, night sky ambulance, downsizes the habitat of kangaroo rats in California poppies, and earthquake liquefaction due to the lakes so nearby, high fire priority, and therefore, the Housing Element needs to be put on hold.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Having just had a moment to see this, I realize that this must be continued to another meeting because of some elements that absolutely need more work. I realize this is boilerplate, they do this for all these cities, but on page 158, item number 15, under specific program, says, "Single-room occupancy SRO development standards." I believe if you check with the POA, there is a rule against single-room occupancy. There is a rule in the POA that doesn't allow it. Now, it exists in Canyon Lake because people just go ahead and advertise in Friday Flare and they get single-room tenants anyway. But that item has to be checked out very carefully because it's specifically revit it. Also, under services addressing the needs of the elderly, on page 192, it lists these following programs. One, caregiver providers. There are, I think, five different organizations in the Town Center that provide care for the elderly, and they are not listed. K-Sinoceros Senior Center. Why are they listing a program that's in Menifee that we don't have the right to go to? We have a senior center, and there are some things that we can go to in our senior center, but this isn't one of them. The, it lists in-home supportive services, Riverside County, none of it is specific to Canyon Lake. But I think the most egregious is on page 200, if you look at Appendix A, Assessment of Housing Needs. It lists organizations that are available for, I'm trying to find the title of it. Large family housing needs under, I don't know what it's for. It says Habitat for Humanity, County of Riverside Department of Public Services. It lists the Canyon Lake Family Matters Club. We have dozens of clubs in Canyon Lake that provide services for the elderly, provide funds for the elderly, provide programs for the elderly, for families and for children. And the only one that's listed is Canyon Lake Family Matters. An egregious lack of information. Number five lists Hope, Helping Our People in Elsinore. Of course, it doesn't list Helping Hands, but we do provide services for the elderly for 800 people on a monthly basis, and pack 3,000 pounds of food on a weekly basis. There's an egregious lack of information here that affects our city. You could pick this up and think you're reading about Menifee or someplace else. It also says, and this is my last item, because I've only had 10 minutes to look at it, I'm sure I could do better with more time. Page 239, Financial Resources. One, Section 8 rental assistance. Two, Community Development Block Grants. And it reads, "Canyon Lake is not eligible to receive CDVD funds directly from HUD. Annually, HUD allocates CDVD funds to the County of Riverside. The county's allocation annually allocates about $18,000 to the city. These funds enable local nonprofits to provide public services." You just negated that, people. You took money from the past, and now you're going to use it for ADA. There's a whole ton of stuff in here, just in my cursory review, that is, that gives a very odd impression of our city. If you live here, you would think, "Good heavens, what are they talking about? San Bernardino? I don't recognize Canyon Lake in this." Need more work. We need the council to read this document and find the same things that I found. It's my heart.
Do you have any other speakers?
No, they're coming, cards.
I'm going to close this public hearing at 9:30. Any discussion by the council? So we need to take some action of some kind. I'm looking at you, Mr. City Manager. Do you have any suggestions?
Well, Jim, do you have something to add?
Well, the staff does have a recommendation in the staff report, so there, if you so choose, you can follow through on that. If there's questions, we'll do our best to respond. Beyond that, I'm not sure what the council is looking for. Would you like to verbalize some of those suggestions? Well, let's go back to where we are this evening. So the document that you have in front of you, we provided comments, we provided the document, we provided comments to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We went back and forth, as Ralph mentioned, with respect to the types of things they wanted to see, the comments we had received. I believe that they saw the first letter from Mr. Kim, so they were aware of those types of items. So our response is back to what they, what they see as a need and what they see that the document should cover. And we believe that we've done that. Is it intended to be an extreme iteration of every available opportunity that exists for the housing needs and the residents of the city? No, but it's intended to identify what is available. So there are services in general available throughout the county, as an example, that people can take advantage of, so those who are listed in the document. With respect to the overlay zone and that particular land use, nothing is changing with respect to that land use. It exists, and we're acknowledging that. We have a program in there with respect to defining some of the more details about it, but the land use exists, the density exists, and we're not changing that. With regard to water and sewer that Mr. Kim brought up, I had a meeting with Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District... I had a meeting with Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. They identified the water and sewer lines in the area. They indicated that they can service the site. And we took that as a positive infrastructure arrangement that a future developer could use. Is it right on the property? That's typically never the case for development. You bring it to them, but water and sewer are adjacent to the property. So, that can easily be served and access is available. The, I think there was an initial comment with respect to the types of housing that we've identified. We reflected the housing needs that are in the Regional Housing Allocation Needs Assessment. So, the numbers that we have in the document are not something that you, as the city council, are going to be able to say, we want low-income housing here, moderate income housing here, market rate, housing in a particular location. But we need to reflect what the needs are. And then the rest of it follows from there with regard to other financial opportunities, other services that people can take advantage of to be able to actually utilize those services and potentially meet those needs. It's always a potential to meet those needs. It may not actually occur. That is kind of the rub with the housing element. There are these numbers, these types of housing income listings. But unless you're actually constructing housing, how do you achieve them? Or you create the opportunity, and that's the best you can do. So, with regard to the opportunity or the options you have before you, there are always to ask for additional information, to act on the document in front of you, to get additional clarification if that will help.
Okay. Does this bring us closer to our RENA? RENA goal? I mean, will this suffice that for H C D?
Well, the RENA goal numbers are in there, so it reflects that. If you're talking about the numbers that are being bandied about right now, who knows what that number is going to be? I would say it's going to be extreme in its nature. It could be eight times as great as the numbers listed here, depending on how they figure that out. One of the numbers presented to us was 600 units. The jurisdiction I live nearby, habit, I think the number is 8,800 units. So, the numbers are extreme. The state wants, I think, 1.3 million housing units. And the local regional government has said 400,000 sounds good to us.
Well, that's one of the things they were emphasizing, changing your zoning laws and rules to change the density. So, your density instead of being single-family is now multi-family, only it's a multi-story. They're promoting multi-story bigger units on smaller property.
Or they're looking at, if I could, they're looking at the doubling up. So, the accessory dwelling unit provisions. And we do have a unique nature here. We'll be coming back to, for example, with accessory dwelling ordinance. And we understand that there may be restrictions from the, from the Property Owners Association that prevent that type of thing. But with respect to putting the program out there and having it available, that's something the staff is going to bring to you. Can they always take advantage of it? No. Are we unique? Of course. We have 7,200 square foot lots on slopes. That reduces the ability to have accessory dwelling units simply because you can't grade and fit a unit in that situation. So, maybe it's very limited, maybe it's none at all. But the intent is to facilitate an opportunity for additional housing. Whether it comes or not, that's in other people's hands.
Can I add a comment?
Sure.
Councilmember Green, your question was in reference to the future regional housing needs. I've sat in on every meeting of what's called the RENA Subcommittee. And after four or five months of working with staff and staff's interpretation of the law, which has significantly changed since you adopted the element, this element, and you got the previous RENA. Your current regional housing needs allocation is 83 units, of which 35 are designated lower income. SCAG committees and staff are now working on the future regional housing needs, which is for the period from October 2021 to 2029. After about four or five months, staff and the RENA Subcommittee agreed on a figure of 660,000. That figure went to the Regional Council, which said, no, that's too much. We're going to go with 430,000. That number is the number of additional households that one might expect from population growth within the region. That number is the number that went to H C D. H C D came back with a figure of 1,345,000 plus. Under the law, SCAG has the ability to object to that figure. At their most recent meeting, which happened about a month ago, they did object. And they went with SCAG's staff recommendation, which was somewhere like 820,000 to 920,000. So, the mid-range around 850,000 to 870,000. That figure went to H C D. H C D has yet to respond back in terms of the figure. So, right now, I think we're in the range of 850,000 to 1.3 million. At the last meeting where SCAG staff reviewed the methodology that they will be considering to allocate the need to the various cities, I did not get in the body language or the staff discussion that they were confident that the need is going to be reduced or reduced significantly. So, I think we're looking at a need at least twice as high to three times as high as the need that's reflected here. The need for the 2013, 2021, 2021 period was 412,000 units. So, when we're talking 800,000, I think we're talking double. And the H C D figure, we're talking three times. The next meeting of SCAG, the RENA Subcommittee is this Monday. That's when they will discuss their methodology that they've chosen to recommend to the RENA Subcommittee on how to distribute the need. And in there, they will also make available a calculation tool that any city can go in and figure out what their needs going to be if it stands at 1.3 or if it stands at 93,000. So, we can expect for all cities in the region, a much higher number overall, and therefore, a much higher number in terms of low-income households.
Thank you.
If I could make one more comment. Typically, with public hearings on zoning matters, we notify surrounding residents. And anytime there's a number over 1,000, state law provides us the opportunities, such as General Plan Amendment, to place an advertisement in the paper, a one-eighth-page advertisement. So, that was done, advertised Friday, two weeks ago. So, it meets the 10-day-plus statutory period for such notification. That was in the Friday flyer.
Thank you. Apparently, the staff recommends approval of this resolution, from what I'm reading and from what council was really pointed out to be. I haven't turned the page yet, so if you all look at page 131 of your book, you'll see what the staff recommendation is. And I guess I would entertain a motion for that to approve.
I don't think we got an option not to approve it. Or we'll be essentially missing our deadlines?
That was my question.
We've missed our deadline. Hence, we're trying to catch up. I think maybe embedded in your question is, so what's the future punishment? State law requires that you have a consistent general plan. If you don't have a consistent general plan, you cannot issue building permits. The state has a history, City of San Bernardino was prevented from issuing roofing permits, electrical permits, very minor permits, simply because their general plan was found inconsistent. And I think that's, that's part of the area that you start to get into as you don't update the elements, keep them in compliance. The state will find a way to come back.
Well, I heard at that meeting I was at, the lever that they can use with the leverage is any funds that are coming, highway funds, anything that they might have access to if they feel they're far enough out, we're already out, is that they have the ability, if we decide not to play, not to be compliant, I'll call it, use that term, then they will start on the punitive side. So, that's our option. And I don't, I don't think I want us to be on the punitive side. Obviously, I hear what you say, Nancy. There's obvious things in here that aren't quite tailored to Canyon Lake. I brought this very same discussion up to the cities that were in this meeting that I was at. They're in the same boat, Desert Hot Springs, Rolling Heights, cities up in the Central Valley. And what happened, all of us have different communities, all of us explained those very specifics, as well as staff from H C D that we each met with. And each of them said the basic same thing that you're saying. You guys missed the deadlines. It obviously appears you don't want to be in compliance with the state. The governor said this is his number-one priority, is to get us into some kind of social engineering for housing. So, if we don't do it, it will be done for us. It's kind of what they implied. We, I think we can do some clarifications, but I think we need to adopt it personally and get us so that we can start moving forward and figure out exactly how, how our community fits with it. Because realistically, you start talking about numbers that we're talking about now, that really does change the playing field, just based on what size. So, before we even go there, we haven't built anything there. We have obviously limited land. There's a lot of things that have to take place. But I do think we need to get the document going. So, with that, I make a recommendation that we move forward with the adoption of this. First reading. My second.
Just a point of clarification. The motion is to approve all three of staff's recommendations. Correct? Okay.
It is a resolution with regard to the General Plan Amendment, so it's just action. As soon as you take it this evening, it's in effect. So, there's no first and second reading as there would be with an ordinance.
My second still stands.
Thank you. So, we'll do a roll call. Councilmember Bonner?
Aye.
Mayor Pretchem Castillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Aaron Times?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve item 11.
Thank you.
Talking long, well, long. Are you talking long? Very brief.
The room is starting to empty a little bit now, Chris.
They're all about to talk.
City manager comments, please.
Mr. Mayor, it's been a long evening. We'll keep this very brief. Just, just wanted to give a few quick updates on things that we've been working on. As you might imagine, we've been voting a significant amount of time to issues surrounding our contract for fire services. We had a special meeting on that topic last Thursday, so I won't expand on that anymore tonight. Wanted to let you know that we have continued to work on our program to enforce the fire code internally and do life safety inspections. We intend to send a letter to the county next week informing them that that is our intention. Our enforcement staff are this weekend going to a training to do these inspections. In fact, they will be, they will come out of that training as certified fire marshals. And we intend to be able to start those inspections in January, which will be in conjunction with our regular business license cycle. Speaking of business licenses, we are also aiming to be able to begin adding the residential rentals to our business license program beginning in January. We intend to be ready to go by January for that. We are meeting with, we had a meeting recently with Laserfish to continue working on digitizing our files. And we have a proposal from them, which we're currently reviewing. So, we hope to have, have an agreement signed shortly and move forward with digitizing files. We have an R F P that went out this week for I T services and also to, along with that, to migrate our servers to the cloud to be better protected. So, we hope to have that largely done by the end of this calendar year. We're working as quickly as we can to do that. We are 90% complete with our inventory of all city assets. So, hopefully, in the next week or two, we'll be able to present that to you so you can see the work that's been done. Our W R C O G fellow Megan has been putting a lot of work in on that, on that project. We've been working very hard with our economic development consultant on a number of projects, most urgently, the B L M land. We received a letter back from the county on one of the parcels acknowledging our request and assigned a case number. So, that's progress, although the letter didn't warn us that it could be a lengthy process. We, our consultant has been conducting a lot of meetings. He met this, this week with R C A, has had phone conversations with Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game, has met with Supervisor Jeffrey's office and has had phone conversations and is working on setting up an in-person meeting with Congressman Calvert to pursue a legislative opportunity to perhaps have the land conveyed, which would save us a lot of time and money. It is, as you might imagine, an incredibly complex topic. He's going to be voting a lot of time. R C A has a lot of interest in the area. And there will be requirements to, R C A will help us with to replace mitigation land on the B L M properties that, even when you look at the R C A map, they're not included as R C A properties. But we're, we're learning more and more that R C A considers them not theirs by ownership, but they consider that that land is supposed to be also for habitat. So, we're working through an awful lot of detailed issues on that and hope to have a more thorough update for you at the November meeting. I attended the W R C O G Technical Advisor Committee meeting last month and SCAG's chief operating officer was in attendance and talked an awful lot about the RENA process and the methodology. And everyone in the room, I would say, was pretty nervous about what those numbers are going to be. That's going to be a significant challenge for us in the next few years, figuring out how to implement the requirements that look to be like they're going to be pretty large. I also attended a Southwest Communities Financing Authority Executive Management Committee meeting. And it's a good thing, we, we were, our city was erroneously on a naughty list that was about to be sent out of cities who have not yet adopted the Animal Control Ordinance. And I thought, wait a minute, we did this. And I, I brought that up and no one believed me. So, I went back and I, I sent a copy of the ordinance and a link to the agenda. And I got a very nice apology email from them and I thank you that we got that done. There's an awful lot else going on, but it's going to late night. So, I think I'm going to have it there for tonight. And I'd just like to say, welcome back, Councilmember Ryan. We're very happy to have you.
Thank you. Skip to Councilmember Castillo until Councilmember Bonner returns.
Okay, thank you. On the 15th, I plan to attend the Leshma Education and Outreach Meeting. I'm excited about this because it continuously... I'm excited about this because it continuously allows Leshwa Board to come up with new and innovative ways to further our message. It will be a launch point in Lake Elsinore, which is also interesting. I have not been there yet, so I'm excited to check that out. Also excited to attend the Lake of Cities, you know, conference. I've been to one of those, so I'm looking forward to that. Welcome back, Larry. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bonner, are you ready to report?
Just, I went to the state of the city the last month, and the mayor, Zimmerman, did an incredibly good job. And I remember the last one we had, Nancy, you did it, what, 10 years ago? And we've never done one since, and I think we need its time to do it again. I went to the RCDC commission meeting and the committee meeting, and Matt and Dale, the roundtable, will be there, but we don't know where because the country closed, it's closed because of the overseas. So the city manager's going to find a place for us. That's all right.
I'll let you give my vector report.
Mosquitos.
Would you have anything that you would like to add? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
It's been a long night, so I'll make this quick. Glad to have you back, Larry. So we're excited, and we've got a bunch of big stuff that we need your help on. I'm just going to give a quick report. RTA, we've got a new chairwoman, councilwoman out in Wildemore. Our former chairman, Brandon Lane, took a gig in DC, so we did some moving around a little bit and did some new appointments. I'm excited that I just recently got appointed to the transportation committee on SCAG, so I'm trying to get all that I can in on transportation. As a commuter myself, I spend about 30,000 to 35,000 miles a year on the road, and looking at the statistics for our community, it's pretty interesting. As most of you know, there's a lot of commuters in our community, and transportation is a key element. In fact, over 65% of people that commute out of Canyon Lake drive more than an hour to get to and from work. So I'm one of those statistics, and I think it's important that we pay attention to the transportation needs that are happening for our residents. So I've taken it upon myself to get involved as much as I possibly can in transportation. Other than that, we've got a lot of good things going on in the community, and I'm excited to serve with each and every one of you and continue to work and make Canyon Lake a better place. So thank you so much.
If you're going to be attending SCAG, you're going to get used to a three-hour I'm going to skip over most of our reports because it's been a long night. I just wanted to read something that I got from the Canyon Lake community of golfers. I think it's, and this was from Jill Kavation and John Gaglen and Pat Campbell. I happen to be invited to go to some photo ops. That's about all the participation that I had, was handing out a few trophies, but I'll just read this to you, if I may, please. The Canyon Lake City Golf Championship was a big success, and we want to thank you for your $1,000 contribution that helped to make it possible. It allowed us to keep the entry fee in a reasonable range and still provide a nice meal on Sunday and increase the price payouts. We had a great turnout with 58 participants in the tournament, which is up about 70% from last year. The results of the social media campaign conducted by the POA were evident with additional players from outside of Canyon Lake. We drew players from Rancho Santa Margarita, Fontana, Alta Longa, Indio, Corona, and Irvine, in addition to Lake Elsinore, Menifee, Murieta, and Tamekina. The growth in numbers in the expanded area we are drawing from are good signs. The event is growing. I've attached a copy of the winners and an article we are sending to the Friday flyer for publication this week. We have dates scheduled for next year on October 3rd and 4th, 2020. We're already looking forward to next year. I'm not going to steal the Friday flyer's thunder, but it's too long to read, and you'll get to read it all in a couple of days, who the winners were, and so on. So with that, I think.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
That I can't believe I forgot to mention, and it's because it's 9:40. We had our budget finance meeting today, and I'm happy to report that the city is currently running on a surplus of $220,000. This is big news for us because I know that we've made strong strides to make cuts and do all that we possibly can. So for 2018, 2019, I'm happy to, to report that. I hope I can report the same thing next year as well.
Mr. Mayor? If I may?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Let me just expand on that just, just a little bit. Our finance director, Terry Shea, has been working to close out the books for last fiscal year, and all but I think one little loose end is tied up now. And the, the good news, and surprise news, somewhat of a surprise, is that even though we were budgeting over a $500,000 deficit for last fiscal year, we ended up not only erasing the deficit but having a surplus. And there are a number of reasons for that. Obviously, staff does whatever we can to, to keep costs down. We run extremely lean. We contract for whatever we can to keep costs down. But huge unknown variables for us, as we discussed last Thursday, are our public safety contracts. And the past few years, the numbers that the county has given us for our fire and our sheriff contracts, the budget numbers have been significantly higher than the actual numbers end up being. And this year, that would, last fiscal year, that ended up being particularly drastic. On the fireside alone, the budget we were given was over $2.2 million. When we got the final invoice for, for the fiscal year, the total amount that we were billed was 1.6 million. So, you know, that's over the $500,000 savings right there. Similar on the, on the sheriff's side, we ended up being billed about $111,000 less than the budget we were given by the county. That's great, but the frustrating thing for us is that we have to budget for the number that's given us. And, you know, I've talked with the county about this, both the executive office and our supervisor's office, and they think that they can try to help get the number a little bit more accurate for us in the future, but it's, it's tough on them too because they're, you know, they get estimated numbers from CalFire as well. So it's fantastic news. It comes at a good time for us. I would just caution that we cannot expect that year to year. We're very much at the whim of whatever invoices arrive from the county under our contracts. This current fiscal year, fiscal year, we still have a budgeted deficit of over $600,000. We may find that we've had similar savings that we did last fiscal year, and we'll be very happy about that, but we can't bank on it. So we still have a structural deficit that we need to solve. That being said, always happy for good news.
I will say that, and I was just a member of the audience, not allowed to speak, but I attended the finance meeting, and I've never seen such happy faces in a meeting. So it was terrific, and I'm not going to talk anymore. I'm just going to mention that the next meeting is November the 6th, 5:30 for closed session, 6:30 for open session. And with that, we're adjourned at 9:45.